We do salute the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the roll call, please.
Honorable Mayor Lynn Deal.
Here.
Councilmember Brian Erdy Alice.
Here.
Doug Shawso.
Here.
John Kaper.
Here.
Bill Garcia.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
James Parks.
Here.
We are going to move the public comments section number three and number fourteen. We're going to move that down a ways into the agenda after number seven. So the next item on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes of the August sixteenth council meeting, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. A draft copy of the August sixteenth minutes were provided in your packet and are presented for your approval by resolution.
I would entertain a resolution.
For resolution, approve those minutes?
Hold second.
Resolution has been made by Doug Shawso, seconded by John Kaper. Vote by roll call, please.
That resolution carries unanimously.
The next item is Business of the Month, Ms. Schneider.
Good evening. Nearly a decade and a half ago, Randy and Carrie Bernhardt had an interesting business proposal. It would take advantage of the growing popularity of the coffee shop and gourmet coffees in the United States and bring that concept to Fort Morgan. Rather than purchasing a franchise, the couple decided to create a niche drive-through establishment in our community that is locally owned and operated and embodies the many valuable contributions such businesses make to our community. Tonight, it is my honor and privilege to announce that Peppy Coffee Company has been selected as this month's Business of the Month recipient. Each month, this distinction is given to a Fort Morgan business that excels in such areas as pride in their business, top-notch customer service, growth, active involvement in area organizations and programs, and community contributions that assist in creating a better quality of life. For nearly three years, the Bernhardt's spent endless hours planning for its operation, securing the ideal spot on the corner of Main Street and East Ninth Avenue at the entrance of town, and working with local tradesmen to erect the drive-through coffee shop. Randy, who grew up in Fort Morgan and graduated from Fort Morgan High School, felt that he had a good sense of what would make the venture successful. The dream came to fruition on December 6, 2008, when Randy and Carrie opened its doors after a five-month construction period. It has been a popular choice for many to get their caffeine fix ever since. In its three-part mission statement emphasizing product, community service, and financial operations and growth, Peppy Coffee Company notes that it strives to make and serve products of unsurpassed quality to its customers in a fast and efficient manner. The business offers everything from a light blend house coffee to lattes, cappuccinos, frappuccinos, to expressos, hot chocolate, chai, Italian sodas, and smoothies, alonged with baked goods to balance the huge menu of these hot and cold drinks. The business's mission statement also comments about community service and states that its operation will succeed in a way that recognizes commitment to the community and to improving the quality of life for those in the community. Throughout its tenure, donations of product and monetary assistance have supported several nonprofit organizations with an emphasis on the youth in our community. Additionally, the mission statement notes that the company will operate on a sound financial basis of profitable growth and creation of financial reward and opportunity for its employees and owners. Throughout time, the Bernhardt's have trained and empowered more than 100 people to work at Peppy's. Word continues to spread among individuals that Peppy Coffee is a great place to work at a job that serves people. The coveted positions allow the Bernhardt's to employ fantastic baristas and staff who enjoy this kind of work, and it shows. The fast and friendly service is incredible, garnering a 4.5 overall star rating on Yelp with comments such as "best coffee in town," "friendly staff," and "they're great at special request," and "you don't even have to get out of the car." And this from Brad in Marshall, Minnesota. "Well done, Peppy. Stopped yesterday while in town on business. Friendly, priced right, and tasty." Finally, Stephanie from Omaha notes, "cute little place to swing by and get good coffee. Picked up a cool mug with a handle that's become my favorite coffee mug. Very friendly staff. Was recommended to try it from other business owners as I was traveling through town. Glad I stopped." In turn, the business continues to be successful and grow in terms of product offerings, customer traffic, and reputation. Please join me in recognizing and thanking the September Business of the Month, Peppy Coffee Company, along with the Bernhardt family, for the outstanding work and contributions they provide in order to make Fort Morgan a great place to live, work, and enjoy.
As you can tell, I depend upon employees. I had to get the long-sleeved shirt in 100-degree weather with the Peppy Coffee. The reason that Peppy Coffee has been successful is because of people. The people that work at Peppy Coffee and the community. The community has embraced that little coffee shop like we never imagined, and I want to thank the community for what they've done. It almost choked me out. Thank you.
And I would just say, we are so thankful for the coffee shop to keep us all awake, and it's been an excellent coffee shop. We love it. The next item on our agenda is appointment of four new members to the Historic Preservation Board, and I get to do that. And our first one is Corinne Williamson, and I met her when I was campaigning. And they're from California, and they bought the Tim Price House. We all know houses by who's lived there for eons. And so I had a great visit with her. She loved the house, actually lived in a motel and apartment till they could find a house, and they loved that house. So I immediately grabbed her. Anyway, she has applied for our Preservation Board, and we welcome her. The next one is Corliss Blodorn. We all know Corliss. She's a member of the Blodorn family, daughter of John and Mildred from the Farmers State Bank. She has CUDU recommendations, Blodorn Foundation Board, Hospital Board, Museum Board. She was a teacher at MCC for 22 years, and I took some classes from her. And she's loaded with history, so we welcome her aboard, Corliss. And of course, Joanne Ostwald, who's lived here for many, many years. She was one of the first persons I met that was interested in houses a long, long time ago. We had her husband, Don, was on the board, and he retired. So Joanne has joined. She's an English teacher, community history writer, hospital board. Her credentials are a mile long. Welcome to have her. And we have Paul Girk, who I don't know, who grew up in Fort Morgan. He's a teacher at the school district, and I might think that she might be related to Mrs. Girk.
That's his mom.
Yeah, okay. She was my daughter's teacher, fourth and fifth, and favorite teacher. So I still stay in touch with her, and so does my daughter. So I'm sure he'll be a great addition. So we have a great board now. We have great activities. We have a $20,000 grant that we're going to be doing, citywide inventory that Sandy Hazard worked, cut out for. Okay, so I will need a motion to accept those four on the Preservation Board.
Your Honor, I'd like to motion to approve the four members you've presented to join the board.
Second.
It's been moved by John Kaper, seconded by Brian Erdy Alice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. We have a great board. Thank you. Thanks for volunteering. The next, oh, yeah, that's my motion. The next item on the agenda is request for in-kind services and fee waivers for our Fall Harvest Car Show. Ms. Goggins. Oh, yeah. Steve.
Mr. Goggins.
First and foremost, I am not Ms. Goggins. No, Emily had a busy event at the senior center today doing tie-dye, trivia, and tacos with the seniors. So she was busy with that, so I said I would cover for her here.
Nice.
Good evening, Council. What we have here today is an in-kind fee reduction request for the Fall Harvest Car Show, similar to what we have seen in the past. We are seeing requests for picnic shelter, the van shell, picnic tables, trash services, police, and street closures totaling to $6,633.90. I came in right when we started. I don't know if Brad or Dave are here. I don't see them. So I don't know if they'll be able to answer any questions directly as the event organizers, but I can answer any questions for you. Just based on the history of the event, the success of the event, the economic benefit to the community, it is staff's recommendation that you approve this request. Any questions you may have?
Great, great, fun time.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions? Okay, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, for resolution, accepting or taking care of the fever waste in a value of $6,633.90 for the Fall Harvest Car Show.
Second.
I have a resolution by Doug Shawso, seconded by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call, please.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, the next item will be public comment for audience participation for items not on the agenda. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Speakers must sign in on the sheet next to the podium and address the council from the podium. The council will not take action at this meeting in response for public comment.
I have a public comment. I'm speaking for my husband, Bob, as well.
Barb, talk into that mic. It's there. Oh, okay. Yeah, okay, okay.
You're not supposed to sign in?
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. I'm Barbara Keenan. I'm speaking for my husband and myself. We are both angry and disappointed as taxpayers and as active civic-minded citizens that so much ado about everything or anything, that's the title of the popular Shakespearean comedy, has taken up so much time, energy, and money when there are far more important problems that need this council's attention, like housing, weeds, potholes, dead and dying trees. One of Bob and my most guilty pleasures is watching Judge Judy, and she says quite often, "if it doesn't make sense, it isn't true." Well, it doesn't make sense to us that the working relationship between Lynn and Steve Glameyer went south so quickly, only a few months after she took office, because she made her admiration for his many abilities and her respect for his performances so clear, so public, and so often. So when he accused her of making a disparaging remark to an employee, and that's so troubling that he felt he had to resign, it didn't make sense that he, our council members, or city department directors just didn't ask her if that was true. And if it was, how come? It also didn't make sense that a man of 29 years of public service could be so wounded by a remark that was never made that he resigned rather than attempt to resolve their personal differences. Certainly, he must have faced criticism in those 29 years. Of course, the investigator discovered that Lynn never said that remark, which he would have known had he asked her. The second accusation that didn't make sense to us was the employee that said that she told the Heritage Foundation Board what to do concerning the Ray Moe Bridge kiosk. I'm a member of that board, and I was there. And she explained something that I and none of us knew was that many years ago, we had accepted responsibility for the maintenance of that kiosk. And now it is almost unreadable. And she went on to explain the history of that. She didn't tell anybody what to do. She gave us information. This deliberate spinning and twisting of her comments made by several city employees were described by the investigator as, quote, "piling on," unquote. Everyone in this room, including the council members and city employees, have known Lynn, and many have worked with her for many years, and all of us have benefited from her many decades of community involvement. Yet all those years of service were ignored, and some people who in the past she had supported during really difficult times and should have known better were all too eager, I got Bob, were all too eager to accuse her of things she didn't do rather than give her the benefit of the doubt. This is now Bob Keenan. Ironically, the only person disparaged was not Mr. Glameyer but Lynn, because he disparaged her at a public council meeting, in a scathing interview with The Times, and on the radio, even though both Lynn and Mr. Glameyer were told not to disparage each other publicly as the investigation progressed. She didn't. He did. Then he quickly moved to Delta, leaving her to face the dire consequences of being made a scapegoat. Of course, we don't know the real reasons that Mr. Glameyer resigned, and we can only speculate about his motives. But it's common sense, as the investigator concluded, that there were other reasons for his resignation, and the so-called remark was only one. The investigator said that Lynn, who did, oh, shock horror, break the city charter rules, not the law, did so with mitigating circumstances, and her phone call to an employee was based on a concern as a friend, and there was a misunderstanding of perception. She thought she was offering helpful suggestions. He thought she was just adding to his already heavy burden. Still, the investigator found she was held to another standard, since a city council member had also broken the charter by contacting an employee and then said that that interaction was different. Isn't it always? The investigator said that was, quote, "disingenuous," unquote. Besides Judge Judy, Bob and I like mysteries, and always the basic questions of the police investigator or the detective says, who has the motive, who has the opportunity, and who benefits? We suspect we know who had the motive, the opportunity, and who benefited. And of all the people involved in a situation blown far out of proportion, it certainly wasn't Mayor Lynn Deal.
I'm Corliss Blodorn Littlefield. I'm here to, I can't do any better than what Mrs. Keenan has done. I am simply here to talk about what Lynn Deal has meant to this community. I believe you're in a building right now that is part of the federal historic registry. Am I correct? Do people understand that? It was her efforts in that area that has made many, many buildings in this particular city have that designation. It may be seen that this is not important as far as her being a mayor. This is someone who went door to door as she campaigned. She talked to everybody she could to get the ideas and to find out what was important to this community. She sits as mayor with a big vision for Fort Morgan, and she talks about that vision to many people. She has done this throughout the years I've been aware, the years I've been aware of. I have been back here 35 years as a Fort Morgan resident. She has the complete idea or vision for Fort Morgan. I have never seen anybody else in this community like that, except for maybe Sue Spencer, who many, many of you don't know. There were very few people who have done that, and here she is, mayor, and people think she's whatever. All the things Barb said, I cannot go into it. But she, I'm just going to say that all of her efforts have been for the betterment of Fort Morgan in its entirety, not just downtown, not just certain homes, not just certain areas, everything. We have HGTV here now, amazingly. I don't know, I do not, I have nothing to do with it. I'm excited about it. This is part in part because this building's still here. People have not vacated all of downtown to go out east of Fort Morgan, which was an absolutely ridiculous idea. And I'm just trying to say Lynn Deal is part of the thinking of reviving and keeping Fort Morgan as it is, and as mayor, she does not deserve the kinds of accusations, the kinds of innuendo, the kinds of things written in the newspaper that I have seen. So I'm simply here to point that out and tell you that she is truly a leader for this entire community, and she deserves all of our recognition in the most positive way we can. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's all public comment. Okay, the next item will be item 14, the council review of independent investigator's report on alleged violations by Mayor Deal. And for rebuttal, possible action by resolution, potential sanction, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am just going to go over the procedural guidelines for this item. As with the rest of the proceeding, today's process is dictated by Rule Seven of your City Council Rules of Procedure. So the first thing is Mayor Protem Kaper will preside over this agenda item. Mayor Deal will be given an opportunity to make a statement. The purpose and focus of this is to rebut the allegations examined in the independent investigator's report. The mayor may then present witnesses or documentary evidence that tend to rebut the allegations investigated in the report. Any witnesses are asked to keep their testimony to three minutes. At the conclusion of the mayor's presentation, council may direct questions to Mayor Deal or her witnesses. Following those questions to the mayor, the remaining council members, obviously not including the mayor, may deliberate and decide what action to take, if any, is appropriate. So just as a reminder, council's options are four. One, take no action. Two, Rule Seven provides for a reprimand. Three, Rule Seven of your City Council Rules of Procedure provide for a formal resolution of censure. Or finally, the Colorado Vice Statutes provides that any member of the city council may be expelled or removed from office for good cause shown by a vote of two-thirds. At the conclusion of the council discussion, a member may make a motion to implement any of these options or not. And that's it. I'll be available for any procedural questions.
Thank you. No, we know you.
Okay. I need to talk into the mic. I welcome this opportunity to speak to the council and to the community and to the employees. Over the last 35 years, I've worked with the city in the profession of historic preservation. I served on city council in 2008 to 2012, and again in 2020 till '09. During all those years on and off city council, I've worked with a variety of city council members and city managers. I've also sat on both sides of this room, as a citizen advocating for a project as well as city council member voting for or against an issue. When it comes to city government, passionate people, and politics, there's bound to be a little drama at City Hall. The scenarios are as diverse as the personalities who ever sat in a city council seat. It's the risk you take and must consider when you set out to serve in a public position. It was a big step for me to take a chance to run for the office of mayor. My motivation was my love for working with people on good community projects. I also saw the potential to work with a city manager who was an organized project manager, able to get things done. Just six months later, it was an unbelievable and shocking experience to listen to his angry personal attacks, accusing me of disparaging him to an employee and breaking the charter. I was blindsided by his level of suppressed anger unreleased on me at his public resignation at a city council meeting. I was never given a chance to know specifically what my offenses were to deny, explain, or resolve any of his issues. I found out later through the investigative report that he had a buildup of unresolved issues with me, and this was his planned exit strategy for his type of retaliation before moving out of town. When I was elected mayor, I was well aware I was not everyone's choice. During my transition period before taking office, I graciously accepted my initiation by a polite exclusion from the mayor's meetings. The city manager flexed a little muscle by objecting to my decision to add the municipal judge and chief of police to my first agenda for this wearing-in ceremony. I believe in initiations. They're a good attitude check to earn your rights of passage into Fort Morgan's office of mayor. Serving as mayor is an honor and a big responsibility. It's been an exciting time to serve on council because I love projects and the people, progress, especially now with housing development, new businesses, and revitalizing Main Street. The city continues to rebuild and repair streets ahead of schedule and has made great improvements to clean up the alleys and tackling the weeds. The irony of Steve Lameyer's sudden resignation is the fact that I supported all the qualities he had to offer the city. He was very proficient with all the projects, with knowledge of infrastructure, buildings, and utilities. He was very organized with the budget in preparing the projects for the agenda. I constantly praised him on both my radio talks and at a variety of groups I spoke with. I always appreciated the background material and clear information we were given at the council meetings. I never had a complaint about him to any council member or employee. I was thrilled when he chose to move back into historic City Hall building. Equally important to me as mayor is my commitment to the electorate. I actually loved campaigning all over town. I actually loved campaigning all over town. It was interesting to see some of the neighborhoods up close and personal. During this term in office, I've especially loved the people and have devoted my time and energy to tour all of our major industries and specifically focused on learning about all our nonprofit organizations and getting to know more about our diverse population, which is almost 40%. Steve Lamarr was admittedly very sensitive to citizen complaints. He stayed away from any community chatter on Facebook and attended very few public events to avoid public pressure. At a city retreat, he expressed his preference for handling citizen complaints by asking council to refer them directly to him. I've always been committed to take every call, answer their questions, and listen to some of the complaints with the intention of offering information and listening ear. I love the challenge of problem solving, and I have handed out dozens of maps showing the progress strictly for streets, which helps with all the street frustrations. I've driven to people's houses to personally check out their specific problem, and if serious, I took pictures and with his permission, I sent them to the manager. It's always rewarding to see people happy with having been heard, which seems to be what, what they really want. I've handed out hundreds of complaints and ended up enjoying our conversations. I can't imagine sending all of those to the manager or how I've had the time to create a toxic work environment for him when I only go to City Hall two times a month for City Council meetings. The one and only time I thought it was necessary to bring a responsible citizen's complaint to the manager was over a physical fitness instructor objection to sign a third legal contract to increase, increase her rental fee at the field house. After previously signing two other legal contracts in a short period of time, the instructor contacted me first because she had no longer trusted in the city to be fair with her. The investigative report revealed the manager's focus was on me trying to intervene with the negotiations instead of the instructor coming directly to him. One council member informed me that if a citizen refuses to take their issue up with the manager, they're on their own. The focus should have been on the field house staff attempting to change a legal contract for a third time. They might have had a reason. A contract is a legal agreement, whether it's a physical fitness instructor, construction company, or an employment contract. If a citizen has a legitimate concern, it's their right to ask their elected representative to advocate their issue to the proper authority. That's democracy. Another incident revealed the manager's extreme sensitivity to public criticism and his level of anger. A citizen spoke up at a City Council meeting where the issues about the field house fees and usage for private events and parties were discussed. The citizen's remarks were somewhat controversial and a few facts were incorrect. However, the manager did correct some of those statements. The manager refused a quick response by the citizen to meet for reconciliation of the issues. Instead, he retaliated by attempting to use unauthorized authority to withhold membership funds from the citizen's place of employment. This was a threat to pressure the citizen to make a public apology at a City Council meeting. Because of the backlash from the citizen's supporters and some reconsiderations, the manager agreed to meet in a private meeting for a resolution. We as City Council, as well as the manager, should allow citizens to come to a public council meeting to express their opinions. If they follow our speaking guidelines, and no matter if we personally agree with them or not, it's their constitutional right to free speech without retribution, particularly to their place of employment. No matter how much we respected the City Manager, I have an obligation to do what's right. These two issues were the only incidents that I gave my opinion to the manager. They were both involving the field house, which was his project, that he personally invested his time and talent from start to finish. He was never the same to me again, and it's my opinion that these two issues were the longest components of his pent-up anger. And that building happens to be one of our finest buildings that will be his, his legacy to this town, what he left for us. One of the things that distressed me the most about this entire situation is the disruption for the city employees. Council and managers come and go, but the employees remain with their daily work schedule. One of the qualities of the manager that I respected the most was his care and concern for the employees. They are the ones who have to adjust themselves to a new management style. Every new council that chooses new projects, new directions for the city. Without the city employees, we would not have a municipality. I'm totally relieved and thankful for Brent Nation, who stepped up for the City Manager's job. I have known him, his parents, and his grandparents for many years. He is totally committed to the city and probably knows the city inside and out more than anyone and is our valued water expert. I will support him and look forward to his advancement in this top position. He will continue with all of our building and infrastructure projects without missing a beat. Serving on City Council is an honor and a real learning curve to realize all the behind-the-scenes operations of all the departments. Before I served on council, as most of us, I only saw the work crews out on the streets. All of us drive around bucket trucks, barricades, dodge around orange cones, street closures, blocked alleys, in a hurry to get where we're going. We rarely see their faces or name tags of those employees. We pray for our power to be turned back on during severe Colorado storms while the city light and power crews are out in the weather, up on a pole connecting the dangerous hot wires. And we certainly love using our wonderful soft water without ever touring our beautiful water department. We pay our city bills and pay our taxes, but never see the internal financial department employees who collect, record, and distribute the 77 million into the proper accounts and to be budgeted out for the year. During my first term on council, I loved meeting all the employees. To show my appreciation, I wrote many newspaper feature stories about the ones who are always behind the scenes with very little public recognition. My stories included employees, new jobs, new equipment, building projects, and special accomplishments. When I returned to council, it was great to see so many of them who were still on the job with career advancements. Many of them I've known as kids, and they stayed in Fort Morgan to contribute to the growth of the city. I continue to honor and promote them with phone pictures and videos and posting them on Facebook. I was the only council member who took pictures during the council tours, featuring the employees, their workplace, and their equipment to share on Facebook. The council tours of all the city departments are an essential part of our job. It's the only appropriate time for us to meet the employees along with their directors. It's a great to see their workplace and all their equipment. We need to ask questions, compliment them, and learn more about the work that they do for the city. I've studied and know the charter well and the rules of procedure. It would be entirely appropriate to go to their workplace without permission. I would never dishonor any employee by telling him what to do when I don't have the slightest idea exactly what they do or how they do it. I'm very thankful for the investigation by ILG and the findings. Until that investigation took place, the final report came out, I had no idea exactly how I broke the charter and how I disparaged Steve Lamarr to an employee, which was proven never happened. The first I knew he was even angry with me was his request for a quick meeting with me, John Caper, Mayor Protem. He read a short paragraph of his charges and asked for an executive session the following Tuesday. Then he got up and left. At the executive session, he again expressed his anger, his charges against me, and announced he was resigning at the following council meeting, and then he got up and left. At the council meeting, he publicly unleashed his accusations of personal disparagement and charter violations and named me the mayor the reason for his resignation. Once again, he packed up and left. This time, he already had a plan to move back to Delta. He moved the next week and left me holding the bag with all the blame. The city's investigation with ILG was absolutely necessary for several reasons. It was an outside professional person, not connected with bias or preconceived viewpoints, and skilled in body language and demeanor. The witnesses had to be specific to the issues. During the investigation process, we were told not to comment or disparage one another. After the manager's farewell to Fort Morgan at a council meeting, he gave another full story to the newspaper how I disparaged him to employees was a liar and he could no longer work with the mayor. His final radio talk on KFTM was again his full gamut of accusations for his intention to do personal damage and defamation of character stating, "I broke the law." What comes out of a person's mouth reveals what's on his heart. The investigation was fair and gave us a good overview of specific problems and insight into the whole ordeal. I read and studied it with an open mind to examine and learn from several witnesses their perspective of each allegation. With my own documentation and timeline, I was able to refute two of the director's charges. It was reaffirming that investigator also sensed the concerted effort and the piling on and, and, and genuis. I also agreed with the report that the employees were emotionally charged and angry because he was a respected manager. The investigation concluded the only valid issue was the call to employee about landscaping at the Rainbow Bridge. That employee is one I totally respect, and I always will. He was honest in his interview, and I agreed it was consensual conversation. When I called, I stated it was not as a council member and was not to tell him what to do. That would be a char, a charter violation. He responded back that we had always been friends and could talk to me. The motive to call him had nothing to do with the manager. Back in early April, I had given the manager all the information about the Rainbow Bridge Hundred Year Celebration and the photo documentation, condition of landscaping, and historical markers that were bad condition. The landscaping was not in the budget for upgrades this year or next. The Fall Harvest Car Show and a possible Heritage Foundation event were planned for By the end of June, someone on the Heritage Foundation asked me if the city was going to renew, renew the landscaping. I had a notice from another event involving our state scenic and historic byway that would be down by the bridge. I had an email from a traveler in June who specifically noted the weeding condition at each end of the bridge and enjoyed the bridge and the town, but, you know, specifically noticed that. I also heard there was employee trouble in the Parks Department. Before I checked with the manager on the progress of the landscaping with updated photos, I called to check on the welfare of employee that would probably be in charge of the landscaping. I found him already stressed out from internal staff problems, and he said he wasn't told about any event at the bridge. He knew it was not budgeted or in his work plan. He was overloaded with work as well as dealing with several seasonal workers that quit. I did not or would not direct him to do anything, which would have been the charter violation. Instead, I offered volunteer help to do some of the labor such as weeding, raking, and trimming for a good community project. I worked with the Rotary Club and Lions Club to clean up six yards on Saturday, on a Saturday morning, and suggested those clubs might be helpful. He said there was too much to do and, and that, that wouldn't really help. The mitigating circumstance, according to the investigation's conclusion, was the employee felt even more pressure from my call when he found out another project would be dumped in his lap. I didn't see that point of view until the report came out. That was definitely an unintended consequence that I truly regret. The investigative report also revealed my blind spot, which I did not see before. I sought the office of mayor because I love people and projects. Serving as mayor is not about power and prestige to me. I always say I'm one of seven with a few privileges. It's true, it's truly an honor, and now I'm more aware of the influence of the mayor's position and the, the things that I say. I can't ever remember calling an employee before, and I certainly will never call another or even talk to them other than saying hi for two reasons, to protect myself from faults or a miscon, or misconceived conversation or remark. I would never want to add, another reason is I would never want to add any pressure to any valued employee. I will continue to take pictures of them out on the job, but from afar. I believe there is good that comes out of every bad situation if we are willing to look at it. None of us wanted this to happen, but it did. When accidents happen, you repair the damage and move on to your destination. I believe in our community, our foundation, and our strong resilience and our future. September should be a good month. We're looking forward to our first air expo at Municipal Airport and another Break the Silence event, a fun fall festival, car show, and our celebration of our historic Rainbow Bridge with renewed landscaping at both ends. HGTV will unveiling their new sign at the north end of the bridge at the Hundred Year Ceremony, September 6th. We owe the people who elected us to put this behind us, move forward, and work together with our focus on the current projects to make our community a great place to live.
I will answer any and all questions that you have.
Does anybody have any questions they would like to direct towards Mayor Deal? All right.
I got, I got one, I just, you mentioned there was problems in the Parks Department. How did, how did you hear about that?
There's a lot of people in town that have relatives that were dis, disworkers. I have no, I don't have any clue. That, that's, that's normal. That goes on normally. We hear, different people hear stuff that know the inside, and we're a small community, and I've heard, I've heard things like that before. It, it just made me, it made me wonder what was there, and I decided to call, which I was very, it was a mistake, would never do it again.
So when you heard there's problems at the Parks Department, you immediately called the employees and not Steve?
I, I did it because of, I called him because I figured who would be doing the landscaping, and I just called to check on him as I stated in my report.
In your report, you said that you called him to check on his workload, and...
I knew it was not budgeted, and I knew, I knew it was, it was probably added on, and I knew there were more things coming. And so I thought, I just wanted to see, I, I've said over and over again, I would never do it again. I regret that.
I believe it's on page two of the report, it says in bold, council's relation to employees, it says neither the council nor any member of the council shall dictate or interfere with the appointment of or the duties of any city employee.
Section five, council relationship to employees, A, neither the council nor any member of the council shall dictate or interfere with the appointment of or the duties of any city employee subordinate, subordinate to the City Manager, Chief of Police, or to the City Attorney, or prevent or interfere with the exercise of judgment and the performance of employee's city responsibilities. The council and each member of the council... The council and each member of the council shall deal with such employees solely through the manager, chief of police, or the city attorney as applicable, and shall not give orders or reprimands to any such employees.
I'm very well aware of that, and I specifically know what those, each one of those words are, and I prefaced the call that I was not calling in that capacity or to tell him what to do. I was calling on him as a friend, and he has been a friend, and so that, that is what I recognize as being mayor, and I said that in my testimony, that sometimes these people are people that I've known and care about, and so I just called to check. It was not, and I did not give any directives, I did not do any of those items that were listed and would not. It was, and it was taken, the pressure of the call is what, what caused, what caused the issue, and that's the mitigating circumstance.
Sorry, the pressure of a call?
Yeah. The, the report said the violation of charter was a mitigating circumstance, and that's the mitigating circumstance. It's a lesser, it's lesser because of what happened, and it was a consensual call in the beginning, and I know...
So he asked you to call him, that it was consensual?
No, no.
Okay.
Nope. I called, and I prefaced that, that I'm not calling as a council person or to tell him what to do. That's the violation of the charter, and I was given permission to talk. And I, and I can't say this over and over and over again, the, the consequence of that was that did, that call did cause him to have pressure. It put pressure on him because it was going to be more work, and it added pressure to him, and I regret that, and I don't know how to tell you anymore times that I regret that, I wouldn't do it again, I've never even done it. I do know that, I do know that employees call council people when they are, have struggles, and they'll call privately and report that to a council person. That happens, especially in the last managers. They met with people in garages, they were crying out for help. This was not the case at all. But I do know that, that employees call if they want a specific item that we're going to vote on, so it's, you know, there's, there's kind of a fine line there, but you won't catch me doing it again.
Then you said that you had talked with Steve about the Rainbow Bridge in April?
Yes.
Can you elaborate on it?
Yes. I took, when I found out that it was Hundred Year Celebration and in this year, I took pictures and I took them to Steve to manage with me, and I did it early. I took those early, and I'm going to have a little thing to show you. It'll show what, show those pictures, and left that at that. It was not budgeted, and they, and there was going to be a car show, an event there, so they were caught kind of with the bad condition with, it wasn't going to be renewed. So he said at that time it was not budgeted, it wasn't even budgeted next year, so they were going to have to try to find the money and, and back up a little bit and get it fixed up. And the kiosk and everything, we were having a celebration with events down there, so, and I left it at that. Then, when I received more things that were going to be taking place at the end of June, it still, nothing had been done by the end of June, and it was full of weeds and things, so, and then, and that was posed to me, what's going to happen? So I re-photographed those, was going to take that again to Steve, which I did, and took that information to him. But I had, I also heard from the Heritage Foundation, a board member, that is that going to, it wasn't being done, are they going to do it? So it was a legitimate question that I was going to bring back to Steve Lammer. And then I heard that there was trouble. So just, just reasonably, I thought, wow, you know, it's, it's getting late, it's past planning time, and you know, I just wanted to check and make sure before I added that kind of more pressure, I wanted to see if there, what was going on. So it's a legitimate caring thing, it wasn't to undermine anyone, it wasn't anything evil. It was actually, because I have a big heart and I care about people, that I wanted to check, and that was the motive of the whole thing. It wasn't to do anything with Steve, it was to check on somebody, that it was getting late, it was going to be more pressure, there was no money there, and I was going to check and see if it was budgeted or where that was coming. So because I, I over, I love people, and I wanted to check on him, especially him because I care about him so much, and I didn't, and I offered help, you know, when I heard there was stuff going on, you know, I wasn't, it just, you know, normal work stuff, I heard about it, and so I thought, wow, you know, he's not going to have, he's down some employees, the worker bees, and I had, we worked on, I worked with the Rotary Club and the Lions Club, I helped myself and the police, their, their little lawn enforcement, we picked out, I helped them, we picked out six yards, and we went and worked on Saturday, and we did a whale of a job. I thought we, if, if, you know, it wasn't budgeted, and we had some help, and actually the Rotary Club said, "If you know of any other projects, let us know." And so I thought, wow, we, this would be great, this would be a good community project to go down, help clean up the Rainbow Bridge for the Hundred Year Celebration. And so I thought, that's what I offered, I said we could weed, we could do, you know, duh, 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 because I had the pictures, I thought we could do all this stuff, you know, to, to try to help in that capacity. And, you know, he just said, "No, you know, that, there's too much there, I have to go down into it." And I said, "You're right, yeah, that's that." And I left it at that.
You mentioned in the investigation that you, you had known this young man or this person for quite some time before, so you felt very comfortable and...
Yes, and we, we worked on projects, we, we worked on a project downtown where all the bull bouts, they were, they were weedy, and when the, those, the street was done in 2010, and they, and they were full of weeds and the car show, and year after year of that, that was done, and the downtown people said, "Wow, we'll, we'll go down and take one of those ourselves." So I drew up a plan, and I worked with them on that and rounded it up. It's kind of a long story, but we've worked on projects before.
No, I'm just, I'm just taking things from the investigation, the investigation.
Yeah.
What you stated in the investigation.
Yes, I had worked with him before, and there again, not, I didn't, I wasn't thinking of myself as mayor at that point, and that's what I've learned, you know, but it was out of my caring for him and for the work, and I'm a worker bee, I would go and help, you know, and not thinking, not thinking that through that that put pressure on him. So that's what the motive was, it wasn't to do anything bad, but it ended up putting pressure, and that caused that, so.
When you sent these pictures to Steve, did you ever get a response from him?
Yes, he, he just took a look at it, it was early, I said, "We have time, we, we have time to work on this because by September." That's why I did it early and brought it to the attention.
But what was his response to you?
I'm sure he was going to do it, you know, he said we would look into it, that, I leave that to them. But by the end of June, then, you know, people, the Heritage, the, it was, it was full of weeds and the planting season's over, so it was getting late, so I thought, well, and then some other projects, so that's what I did. It wasn't anything to do with Steve.
Oh, you said that you had talked to Steve in April, and then you had sent him some pictures later.
I was, then, yeah, after that, then I took the renewed pictures of the weeds and things, and John Caper knows about that. I took those pictures and gave copies to John, and he went down and looked, you know, at the condition.
But, so Steve had responded to you about the pictures?
He said he saw them before, and I thought they would probably do it. I, I wasn't doubting that he wasn't going to do it.
Oh, I, no, I was just, just, just wondering, you, you had, these are statements you made, you said that you, you had talked to him in April, then you had talked to him later on after you took pictures.
When people ask me questions and months go by, I, you know, I take it back and say, "Where are we on this?" That's my responsibility.
Okay, so you did go to Steve?
Mm-hmm.
I have a question, and Lynn, if, going through this whole process, right, from the allegations to the investigation, like, what have you taken away of things that you've learned from this?
As I've stated before, as my statement I just stated, I learned a lot from this. The main thing is that, well, I'm not in the habit of talking to employees or telling them what to do, it's something that, that's just not doable to me. This was the only time that, you know, I knew that I had called, I had called him, and I've talked for the last 10 minutes explaining all that. My takeaway is again, I would never do it again, and I regret that that put pressure on that employee. I would never do it again because I respect all of the employees. I would never want to put pressure or put anybody in that kind of a position again. And I stated that pretty strongly.
Right, I just wanted to summarize it, but, you know, I think, me, we don't get to take that hat off, right? That's one of the things that we don't get to take out, the city council hat, the mayor hat, whatever, where that, when we're an elected official, you're always that elected official.
It's something I've never done. I served on council for four years, in two years. It's not something I am in the practice of doing.
Okay.
And that, I, I explained that, that it's my blind spot, and I'm certainly not blind about that anymore.
Thank you.
Lynn, I got, bring her back to the, the very first meeting we had, and when this was all dropped in our lap, and it became a he said, she said, and we decided that at that meeting that we were going to have the investigation, you remember that day? And, and I don't remember exactly your words, I'd have to go back and look, but you said you didn't want us to do that.
I didn't know what it was. I, you have to remember, at that meeting, I had just been, I mean, the shock of all that had happened at that public...
We all were, we all were.
Yes, and, but then I went in and had further shock because you all, rightfully so. You all were very upset at me, and it was, it was, I was the victim, and I was the one that did it, and I was blamed. So I was, that was a very hard meeting, I had no idea what an investigation even was.
But I, I remember though, when you, when we were sitting there, you said, "Let's, we don't need to do this."
I thought, what, what did we...
I did it, I did it.
Yeah, I said I called an employee.
I did it.
I didn't, I didn't deny that I knew that I had called an employee. I didn't know the extent of that, and that's what I said, but there's, you have to go through, I've never gone through anything like this. It was shocking to me, and it was me who had to do it.
Yeah, well, we were all dropped that same day, I got the same information you did.
But we all said a lot of things that night, a lot of things that were, you know, a lot of different, I basically listened to a lot of things that were said, and, and, and it was, it was an emotional time for all of us, no question about it, it was shocking to all of us, but we made it through.
Yes, we did.
And I found out about the investigation, the whole process was, it was all, you know, on me. I've handled it all these months, and, and it, I took it a step at a time, I look at things when things are in my lap, I, I address them, I accept them, and I go through it and do what I need to do. And I did that, and then, after I gave my testimony, it still was a little unclear until it came back, and I, I just didn't know how it was all going to be. It was very uncomfortable, and I was still in shock that it even happened. So now that it's over, that's what, I've heard public say, "Why'd you do the investigation? Why shouldn't it have been that first? It was vital to take, when it was so complex, with so much stuff, and I didn't know, I didn't even know some of the specifics because it was just left, 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 and it was like my head was spinning." And so now that it's over, and we're looking back, and we've had time to think and to evaluate, which I did, I studied that, and I looked at all of those perspectives and examined it. When somebody criticizes me, I, I take a look and say, you know, I probably do that or probably not, and make adjustments or not make the adjustments, and I think I very well have made the adjustments and, and planned to do so.
Well, I, I know personally you and I haven't, haven't had a conversation about this, except this morning when I called you on the phone, but you and I haven't had a conversation. I just read the articles in the paper and, and all your...
We were told not to talk to one another, so I was very isolated, and I thought that was appropriate. I, I thought that was an appropriate way to, and I wasn't ready to talk, I wasn't ready to go out and, and defend or anything until that investigation came in. So I've, I've just kept quiet to see what it was and then to take a serious look at it.
Well, I, I just for one would have, would have liked to have had your letter to us first before the letter to the paper went out, so I could have...
I didn't, yeah, I didn't have any letter in the paper. I didn't do that.
Well, I, I don't know how that all came, but I would have just, I would have personally rather have heard from you first and then, and then that.
I figured you probably talked to him.
It just clouded the water a lot for me.
Yeah, no, I didn't, that, I don't have control over what the public feels or does, and that was all out given to them.
Okay.
I'd like to clarify something. The reason, the reason for this report or the investigation was because Steve brought this out in the public. That's why we had to get the investigation, we had to make, we had to expose it publicly.
I accept, I, I said that tonight, it was valuable for so many reasons.
Absolutely.
For a learning experience for all of us. I mean, anytime something like this happens, this big in the city, we all have to take a look at it, and especially me, and we can all learn from it and not go down that road again. These kinds of things happen in city government, and there's been a lot of them, and you have to take a look at it, and hopefully that type of thing doesn't happen again. So we're resilient, we can handle this, we can do it, and I can work with all of you. I have no animosity, I'm ready to go to work in whatever you decide, that's the way it will be.
I'm just saying that if Steve, if Steve would have asked for resign to, to us in a executive session, that probably would have been necessary to go through all this, but because he did it openly.
Well, you can't, you can't look back, it did, you just go forward.
Well, yes, but what I want to explain to the public is this, this investigation was made because it was a public, public statement, so therefore, everything has to be exposed publicly.
Yes, yeah.
Is that correct, Lena?
You know what?
What'd you say?
It's the...
Well, I mean, we, we had ordered the investigation, we had ordered the investigation because it was a public thing. Am I wrong here? I just wanted...
No, I, I think everything, the reason I thought we should investigate is to make sure everything's out in the open, full transparency, full disclosure.
That's what I understand.
The employees feel heard, the people, the citizens of Fort Morgan that have elected us, you know, they understand what's going on, this is, why, so that's, that's why.
This is, this is a public house, they elect us, we should be transparent in everything we do, we're responsible.
One thing I'd like to say is, Lynn, obviously, I think you learned what not to do, moving forward. And I've, I've told you in, in a meeting, this isn't a public lynching by any means, you know? It's not, that's not going to happen. You ask that night, "Are we going to fire you?" I don't think that's any intention on anybody's, anybody's plate on this board or on this council is to get, remove you by any means. We just need, as a collective group, that we all stay within the charter, we know our, our limits, we know our boundaries, and if an investigation has to happen, the general public needs to know. We're doing it because we don't want any secrets being leaked out. We're doing it because we don't want any secrets being leaked out, or any secrets that, that we're trying to hide behind walls.
No.
So that's what I'd like to say. Obviously, you took something away from it.
I agree.
I welcome this. It's a learning experience, and I have certainly learned. I am ready to go forward, and I took a lot away. I, I studied those, and I took, and I, I saw both sides.
Anybody else have any other questions? Lynn, I guess I do have one, I apologize. Investigative, you're familiar with the 17 pages. Ryan did an awesome job of getting that out in the public. Summary of findings, allegation of Mayor Deal engaging contacted employees, confiscates the city charter rules by giving directions to staff, and the findings are substantiated with mitigating circumstances, and you're, you're comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Nobody else has any questions? As we, as council deliberate, so what action we're going to take, you're welcome to sit down if you want to.
I'm here.
Okay. I did prepare a letter I'd like to read, and we'll hear from the rest of you as well as your actions. Mayor Lindell, I believe everyone here tonight has seen your love for the city of Fort Morgan, the time you have invested in sharing your stories. You are the poster child for the history, its people, and the buildings that have been saved and restored within our city limits. But we are not here tonight to celebrate history, but to discuss and determine your actions and interactions with city staff. All seven of the council were provided a city charter and specific training from our city legal team when we started out this current year. Excuse me. That training addressed chain of command with regards to city staff and the police department. Lynn, I have listened to you as we have discussed these allegations on several occasions. I've read what the investigation provided, I've read the texts that you have sent to me, as well as the documents that you have provided me. As I have struggled with the results of your actions, I have been forced to determine what type of action I feel would prevent any recurrence, and to make it clear that your actions affected the city, the staff, and the council. I don't believe that removing you from positions of mayor is the right move. I need to make sure that we aren't here again. I do feel that a reprimand is the correct course of action. It is my hope that we can address this matter tonight and put it behind us, and we, as a team of seven, can pull together in a positive direction to continue the great things we see in the city's future. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, I agree.
Anybody else have any discussion on this matter?
I do, if Clint doesn't.
Oh, you can go first, Jim.
My issue is, is enough, we need to move forward. This thing has grinded us down for how many months? We, as the city council, need to move forward. Steve is no longer here, bottom line. Do I like the, the man? Yes, I do, but he's no longer here. We're going to replace him probably with a very good candidate. We need to move on. Enough, we are just kicking a dead horse. We can't move anymore. We gotta go forward, and this is ridiculous. Do I think you, everything, yes, do, and I agree with Councilman Caper, a reprimand, and let's move forward. Let's move on. This is so taxing. I can't imagine what you went through. I get what you went through, because I've been there myself in my personal life, but council's supposed to be making some tough decisions. I get it, but it's also supposed to be fun for, to me, for the council people to interact with the, with the city as a whole. Not, I, I get that we're not supposed to be directing employees, but enough, we're kicking this dead horse, let's move on.
I've never done it before, I will never do it again, for sure.
And Lynn, I guess, just, I've gotten to know you, my ears on the council, and I can honestly sit here and tell you that you are one of the nicest people I, I've come across in, in my life. And I really think your heart is pure, and your motivations were 100%, I want to help out. And I just think, as long as you're willing to recognize that, you know, that mayor hat, crown is, is on you 24/7, because if something happens, you know, you're Mayor Lindell, you know? Something happens in the paper, you're Mayor Lindell, on Facebook, Mayor Lindell. And as long as you have recognized that, that going forward, you've learned from this, then I think we can continue to be a successful group of individuals that come together, that do what's best for the city, so we can see the progress and see the improvement. So a, as long as you've learned from this, I mean, that's why I asked you, just to make sure, like, we're on the same page. You've learned from this, we're ready to move forward, then--
I'll send you this. You can hand it up on your--
I, I know you're good about sending stuff in the mail. I, I, so I, 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 I'm so comfortable that, you know, I, I don't want to fire you, I don't want to get rid of you, I want to work with you so that we can keep making this a good place.
And I will just say that I love everybody. I have no regret, I have regrets, but I have no animosity towards anybody. I, it's just something that I don't have. And I could, I, I want to work together with a new spirit in a new direction, and when bad things happen, good can come out, out of it. And that's how I'm looking at it.
Any further--
And I love our employees with all my heart.
I would like to say, first of all, I think we owe an apology, like, to our city employees, our citizens of Fort Morgan for all of this. They've gone through quite a bit with everything, not knowing what's going on. Actually, I feel like sometimes I'm the last to know what's going on. So I feel like we owe them an apology, and I thank the people who did come forward, come forward. I know it took a lot of, I guess, guts to come up forward and be part of this investigation. That being said, Lynn, there's no doubt you wear your heart on your sleeve, and, and you love, and you care for Fort Morgan and everything in it. But I, I agree with everybody else, as far as, we did have our retreat, we did learn our charter. I feel like some things were broken, and I agree with John, that there probably should be some kind of reprimand, but I think we need to move forward with reprimand, and move forward with all of this, and put it behind us. So, thank you, and looking forward to moving on.
Okay.
I'm not going to waste a whole lot of airtime. I agree.
Okay.
Okay, so do I, I agree.
All right, I will move on to the next step. Of council's options are, one, take no action, two, Rule 7 provides for a reprimand, and I'll go back to that in a second. Number three is a formal resolution of censure, and four, we don't even want to go there. Unless you want me to read that. Nina, thank you.
I already have that.
Thank you. In the guidelines provided to us by Mr. Wilson, the reprimand can serve as a severe reproof. This can include a letter from the council to the mayor, or an oral statement on behalf of council. So if I do have a motion tonight, I need to know how you want it to be handled. So I'll open up for motion.
I would make a motion to orally reprimand Mayor Deal, and leave it like that.
You want to do that orally in this meeting?
Or orally, I thought I said orally. Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't finish.
No, you're fine. That was the two things I need clarification.
That's correct, that is correct.
I agree with part of that. I would, orally is fine, but if it's not in writing, it didn't happen, so, I know, I know.
Okay.
I just want to make sure I say that. I've told that all my life.
I will, I will add that to my file.
There you go.
I'm good with orally. The reason why is, this is a public meeting, and it's, this video will never go away.
All right. Yes, I have a motion to issue a oral reprimand to Mayor Deal. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Jim Parks?
Can I say something? Do we have to discuss what the reprimand is, or just the reprimand?
Nina, I believe it's already been pretty well addressed, right? Or do you want to clarify conduct?
It could be within, it, it's up to you. It could be within this, this motion, that, or, or just the foregoing hour and a half. It's up to you all, if you want to say, that, that's the, the motion we're making is to verbally reprimand for the reasons set forth in the investigation and to, and tonight, or you could do more, it's up to you.
And with the reprimand, that you continue to work with her on such things?
I'm sorry.
The reprimand with John Caper, Councilman Caper, to be still working with Lynn on such things, on projects.
We, we will.
Okay.
Right.
I like that for my protection also.
We need to vote? Okay, everybody ready to vote on a oral reprimand?
Is it a motion or a resolution?
We had it. Nina, we're back to you.
Yes, you can make a motion, so I think that motion was made, but if you want to clarify, as I stated, or if you want to keep it as it is, that's up to you.
Motion, we vote aye, right?
Yeah.
Resolution, we vote with the lights.
That's up to--
That's right, yeah, if it's a resolution, we use the vote.
All right, we have a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against, that, during, that motion does pass. We are done with this. Now you can come back to your chair and let's get on.
I, I have, I have a surprise for you, and it won't take very long. And since I have an audience and you, I'm going to, you wouldn't expect me to do anything different. I'm going to quickly show you some things about the Rainbow Bridge, since we are going to be celebrating our 100 year. It won't take very long. It was placed on the National Register of Historic Places in '84. It's in a book about that. It's in a heritage book. This is a book that goes out all, all over the nation, and it has a picture of the Golden Gate and Brooklyn Bridge. And there we are, at Fort Morgan Bridge. It, it is a nationally known, unique bridge. This is our byway that Sandy Ingle and I worked very hard, it's up in the right-hand corner. And there's events all the time, there's thousands of people that go up to visit the Pawnee Buttes. This was the money that was invested in that bridge. The 15,000 structural analysis, the 90,000 drawing, the 450,000, and the $100,000 match. The city paid nothing for that, it was totally done for free. The kiosk was for free. The bridge landscaping, there was a $20,000 design plan, 5,000 match. There was federal money, 140,000, and we came in, in 2010 as a stimulus, and I will, Collette Brost, she worked on that federal project, and the book is that thick. We got the money, but I'll tell you what, it was huge, and the, the city's was 35,000. So there's been 900, almost a million dollars in the Rainbow Bridge. The city paid 40. This, these are all the honors of the bridge. I work directly with Doug Ramis on the right, because the city belonged, the bridge belonged to this, the State Highway Region 4, and I wrote those grants with him. Ella Reikley is in the center, she's coming out on, to help us celebrate the 100 year celebration. Also, the state bridge engineer, Bayrouz Far, is coming out to help celebrate. He was the engineer that did the project. It's in all of these books. This book went all over the nation, and it was some of the fewest projects that got picked for all that money, and we were on the cover page, and again, on the inside. It's in our cultural landscaping book. This was a car show that we had on the bridge in 2098, and we will be driving across the bridge again in the car show. They had the National Lincoln Highway Association come, and they had their big presentation on the bridge. And they, in their view, it said, they didn't realize what we had because this is how it looked. And the bridge was restored, and I got back on the council in 2010 and got that other grant going, so we would have the landscaping job. This was the plan that we paid the money for, it was very beautiful. It's in all of the brochures, bicycling, and I just called the, the Forest Service, and there's thousands of people that go up there, and they do come through Fort Morgan. Our feature is the Pawnee Buttes. It was in the Sunset Magazine, Pawnee Buttes and the Rainbow Bridge, and that's all over the northeastern United States. This is how it looked in, in March. Pretty sad that that got, let go that far. This was the end of June, when I went back, it still was weeding. The kiosk, and you couldn't read the plaque down below. The kiosk, you cannot even read. We got it free, so we did not get to pick out what was on it. We have the community history writers in the museum are currently, there's four panels, and we're going to redo all of those in-house, thanks to our city employees. HGTV, it was one of the big things that, that we got picked. The other town had a bridge, and this one had, it's a civil engineering landmark and a national register landmark, and on a byway. So it was very significant. This is, they're tearing down the old sign, it got filmed, and they have created a new sign, and in two weeks, we will see, they're going to re-landscape that other end, and so both ends will be. So my request from you is, let's make sure we get money in the budget to keep that little tiny park up. That's my request for you, and I won't have to be worrying about the landscaping down there anymore. Thank you all. Great, Lynn. So also, it's also advertised everywhere, so I think we need to keep it up. Thank you all.
Are we going to have a mad exodus before we start our business again?
All right, thanks, John.
Oh, that, oh, not us, not us.
Okay, where are we?
Need a recess? Need a reset?
Yeah.
Haven't had one of those since.
Where's my script? Yeah, luckily, so.
Number eight.
You ready? Take care.
I didn't care, gave me a spanking, I'm glad this is over.
We are too.
Okay, now we went down here. Okay, here we go. Okay, hold the liquor license.
No, because I, I, I was supposed to say the whole time. I didn't, I, right, I didn't want to, like, no, I don't want to pick out your words.
You ready?
It would have sounded like an argument, I don't want to argue.
Oh, we lost Brian?
Okay.
That's, that's why.
Okay, we will continue on with our meeting. The next item is council acting as local liquor, local licensing authority. Presentation and possible action on an application for renewal of a fermented malt beverage liquor license for a stinker station at 601 Main Street with a compliance violation. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. My computer's acting up, so I hope I don't lose this, but this is something you normally wouldn't see. Routine annual renewals of liquor licenses are generally handled by my office administratively. Only when there's a violation of liquor laws, rules, do they come to the council for approval. Our police department did a compliance check back in the spring, and there were four or five licensed establishments that sold beverages, alcohol-- alcoholic beverages to, um, underage people. So, um, that's, this is the first of those. You'll probably be seeing several more in the coming months, but, um, this happened in May of two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, the, uh, Fort Morgan Police Department did the compliance check and, uh, Stinker Stores sold alcohol to someone under twenty-one. The employee who did that received a summons to appear in court. And, uh, generally when we, the state often does these compliance checks, they come into town, um, kind of undercover and, um, do these compliance checks and then negotiate a settlement with the liquor licensee. In this case, it was the Fort Morgan Police Department that did it, so we don't have that kind of a stipulation and order which we would normally get from the state. They said they wouldn't even recognize, um, these violations, I believe. But, um, so it's kind of up to the council what to do. Um, in most cases, uh, council has, um, approved the liquor license, uh, with a admonishment to the licensee to, um, you know, make changes in their operation so that, uh, it doesn't happen again. I think I saw somebody from Stinkers here.
They're back there.
Okay. So yeah, if there's, if you have any questions for them, um, they'll hopefully be happy to answer them. And, um, the, the recommendation is to decide in the best interest of the city whether to approve this renewal.
Oh. I've got work to do.
Counsel, I'm Wade Almore. I'm the store manager at Stinker.
Excuse me, would you mind signing in just for our?
Yep.
Records?
I'm the district manager for Stinker Stores, Crystal Hornford.
I guess we'd like to hear what changes you're going to make to address.
We have ongoing training that we do. Um, we have, um, I have documentation here that we have every new employee and ongoing, uh, training that we do. We have them sign. It's, uh, two pages, front and back, a certificate, so to speak, that we do. Um, and then, uh, PowerPoint presentation that we have them watch and we just continually, um, follow up with them.
Store meetings every month. We had one this morning. It's brought up daily. No excuse, plain and simple. Made a mistake. Colorado, we ID if you look under fifty. Some people take that as a compliment. A lot of them, not. If you don't have an ID, they won't sell. And that upsets some people too, but that's the real deal.
I just want to say that we really value that Stinker Station. It's just beautiful. It's busy. It's, it really improved our corner. You do a lot of business. You have great cameras to help catch people. So you've done a lot of good for our, our community. And I think, in my opinion, you know, once you correct something, once something happens, as well, I know, you won't let it happen again. So we really value your place.
And thank you, Mayor. And one thing is, could she have been terminated? Absolutely she could have. Uh, going forward, well, number one, it better not happen and you will be terminated. There's just not, there's no, you know, there's no excuse. She had a lot of excuses. She had a lot on her mind. And I shut her down and said, there's no excuse. I hope I'm standing here saying you, it'll never happen again.
Well, I for one appreciate your, um, owning it.
Yes.
There's so many times people just don't do that no more. And I appreciate that.
I do want to say, and I've talked to the mayor many, many times, I appreciate all the law enforcement, sheriff's department, police department. When I call, they come and they follow up and I appreciate that. And they have really, we were having some homeless issues, have really cleaned that up and I appreciate it.
Yeah. It's a good, it's a good place. And I think that you're very professional. I trust that it won't happen again.
I think we all appreciate you coming and addressing this straight forward. And, um, you know, hopefully this doesn't happen again.
Okay. Okay.
Do you want to ask the chief if he has anything to add?
I don't really have anything to add, but I would say, you know, it's important that we see them, um, taking action to make sure that this doesn't happen. Also knowing that they can't always guarantee that an employee is not going to do something they're not supposed to do. We all have seen it. The reason we have laws and the reason we have police officers is to enforce those laws. The law itself doesn't necessarily prevent somebody, but I, I'm glad to see that they're taking action to try to prevent this and, and make it clear that it's not acceptable behavior.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. I would entertain a, um, resolution to, to accept, uh, to redo the liquor license.
Your Honor, I'll, uh, make a motion to approve the application for renewal, um, for the malt liquor license for Stinker Stores at six oh one Main Street.
Resolution's been made by, um, John Caper, seconded by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call, please.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Great. Have a good evening. Okay, next item is council acting as a zoning board of appeals in a public hearing. This is a public hearing. Please keep public comment to the issues before the council. Each speaker is asked to limit comment to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment. That is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues and to set limit on the duration of the testimony if I determine it to be necessary in light of the number of persons who have signed up to testify. First is the issue of legal notice, Mr. Brennan. Has this hearing been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice in this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on August nineteenth.
Next is the presentation of ordinance by Mr. Nation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, a little bit unique one in front of you. We've actually brought this, um, a request for, um, a variance to you once before. Um, the property that is located at two twenty-nine East Beaver, um, is, um, currently an open lot. Um, when this came to you before, there was a house there being demolished and, um, the owner is looking at putting a triplex back in that old, um, property's place. Um, the reason the variance is coming in front of you is that under our code, uh, there's requirement for this, um, number of parking places needed for the structure that the owner is proposing. The, um, coder required that he would need, um, six spaces for this. Uh, there's not six spaces available with the, the current plan. He came, um, to us back in two thousand and twenty. I think as most of you are aware, that was probably right at the height of COVID and as we were getting ready to shut things down. And so we brought the variance then, made a request that we use off-street parking or on-street parking to satisfy his off-street parking requirements. Um, he is now back and ready to move forward with the project. When we did this variance request before, we did put a stipulation on there that it would only be active for six months. Um, because of COVID and, um, all the things that have gone along with that, um, he got caught up in the fact that his variance did, um, expire. And so he is back once again. The request in front of you is the same as before. Um, there's nothing that's changed with his, his plan for the use of the property or the need for the parking places. The section of street is a little bit unique. When you look at it from an aerial view where we have some parallel parking and some diagonal parking in this block, this request would actually make the whole block more consistent and everything would be diagonal parking, um, in that, um, two hundred block of, um, Beaver Avenue. Um, as typical with a lot of things I bring in front of you, there are criteria that have to be examined. Um, the owner has, um, addressed to the best of his ability, the seven criteria that go along with the, um, uh, variance request. The exceptional circumstances, um, that he's looking at and the hardship that goes along with that. Um, the, uh, site-specific conditions, um, that exists with this, um, request. The manner and application provisions of the regulation would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the land. The u- unique conditions and circumstances that are a result of the actions of the applicant. And the, the granting of the variance would not be detrimental to the public health, sa- safety and welfare of the neighborhood. Applicant cannot derive reasonable use of the land without the variance and the variance will not be injurious to adjacent properties or improvements. Um, like before, staff feels that this is a, a unique enough circumstance and situation that, um, the variance is warranted to be granted. At the time that we put this memo together, we had only had one contact from the, um, public. It was a, um, adjacent landowner in the immediate area that was just asking if there had been any changes to the application. Once I informed them that there hadn't been, um, that was the only thing that they wanted to know and that they didn't have any issue with it. Um, I do believe we might have some, um, adjacent property owners or some that were within the identification area here tonight. If they would have additional comments, they can be allowed to do that, um, on the record. Um, but if this does move forward, there are four, um, actions that we would like to see go with it, that it runs in perpetuity with the proposed triplex structure. Diagonal parking spaces meet our code requirements for, um, eight, basically ADA design. The property owner is also responsible to delineate and mark those spots at his cost and that the on-street parking shall be available to the public and, and is non-exclusive to the property. At this point, I would be happy to answer any questions.
This, I assume, uh, went through the.
This does not go.
Building.
This, this comes directly to you guys under the, as the zoning board of appeals. And because it is a variance request, so variances come directly to you as that board and not to the planning commission.
Thank you.
Okay, next we will hear comments, uh, from the applicant, if any. Did anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I just, uh, on, on ADA, is there a, is there a ramp near there then?
There would be. There's one proposed.
There's one proposed?
Yeah. When, in the packet, we showed.
Yeah, yeah, I see it there. I see it there, but I didn't know if there was already one existing.
Um, I, the ones that are there would be sufficient.
It's sufficient, okay.
Designating an ADA spot.
Fine.
Good evening. I'm Luis Porras. I'm the owner of that property right there down. Just wanted to make a triplex there. Because I got the property. I got everything right. I got the blueprints. And I want to do a triplex and the first one, it has to handicap. And I also want to make it handicap, just in case somebody wants to live there, you know? And it's a single story. There's no basement, so it'll be really easy with the ramp and everything. Any questions?
Making each one of the apartments accessible, then?
One of them.
One accessible. Okay. Oh, that's, okay. Well, that's good. Okay.
Um, I would just like to say, um, actually before I ever got on council, I knew that you were going to tear that old house down and you called me to come and look at it because it was one of our historic homes, but it was way too far gone. There was no saving it at all.
Yeah.
And it beca- it became an eyesore there. And so I do, I like the idea of taking places that are really derelict and then somebody investing to build something good. And so, and, uh, in our little neighborhoods, that, that helps keep up our neighborhoods, so.
Thank you. Yeah. I bought that house without even seeing it or anything and I kind of lost money there, you know? So I went in there and like, oh man, the foundation. And then I saw how old it was. And then I like, I did some maps, saw, see how much it would cost to bring it back to life. And it just didn't add up because it ended up being a really old house, but at the end of the day, if you even fix it up. So I had to do a bunch of stuff, like the vestas report, make sure it's clean, then hauling it, I mean, tearing it down. But I just, I'm like, I was gonna build a house, but I didn't like the area for a house. But then I started talking and talking to my parents and stuff. Then I, they come up and say, yeah, just build an apartment, take as much space as we can possibly can. So we don't have that much, like landscaping or anything, just for people who are willing to work and just come home. So I'm just gonna do like stone and rock, make it easy to maintain because not everybody takes pride in their lawns, you know? So if somebody's renting, people work all the time. They don't have time for that. So that's what I'm gonna do there. So take as much property as I can. Like I said, I did it as big as I could, according to the city limits, you know?
I think it'll be a good, good improvement.
Hopefully. Yeah, that's what we're shooting for. And even with the economy coming down, but people still need somewhere to live. So I'm just gonna invest everything I got there, play with it.
Any other comments? Okay. The next we'll hear from public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on the issue? Any public comment?
Alrighty. My name is Chris Byrd. I live at three fourteen Prospect, um, very close to the house, uh, proposed triplex. I guess my first question or concern is that's a pretty small lot. And when you first talked about the variance two years ago, I talked to Brent about it. Voice my concerns, just stating that I felt property, the, the land itself is too small for a triplex. I still feel the same way. I know there are codes. I know he is probably within his rights to do that property the way he wants to do it. Um, I'm concerned about nine diagonal parking places. That'll take it almost up to the alley on the other side of the street. It will also be in front of that other residential property, correct? Because it'll go through the alley. Okay. Thank you. When we went out the other day and measured Beaver versus Kiowa, Beaver is approximately ten to twelve feet narrower. It is really narrow if you have a car backing out of one of those spaces. If you think it's like down by Zazie's same street, super tight. So if you've got diagonal on both spots, both sides of the street, I'm concerned that you're gonna have somebody, you know, backing into one another. Another question, concern, if you have somebody coming off of Prospect headed south, you've got diagonal parking, you've got a through street going this way down Beaver, I'm concerned that people are gonna be able to see and that there may be more accidents on that corner. My biggest concern, post office. You guys just decided to close the block between Main and State Street on Beaver. So we have the post office. Trucks come down the alley behind the post office. They used to always go left, go whichever way. Well, now they come out of the alley, they're gonna make a hard right-hand corner turn in a semi, pull on a trailer. Can they make that corner? I don't think they can. I really don't. If you're, if you have a forty-eight foot truck, can you make that corner on a hard right? I don't think you can. One other concern I have, no offense to you, sir. As I said, he has several properties. I live next door to one of his also rental properties. It's a high-density. I live next door to one of his also rental properties, it's a high-density. It has four tenants in it, main floor, upstairs, basement and the garage. It is in horrible condition. He bought the property four years ago, he's not taking care of it. I'm concerned. Puts another one on, he says he's gonna stone it, that's great. But I'm concerned, he hasn't proven that he takes care of his properties in the city. That's all I have to say.
Is there, if there's no one else in the public who wishes to speak on this issue? Oh, oh, I didn't see you, I'm sorry.
All right, to Chris's point, so we live at 218 East Beaver. So the post office alley, you come down the alley and we're that house right there next to the church. Has a black fence up now. Anyway, so to Chris's point, you can't take a hard right with those semi trucks. On a Sunday day, on a Sunday morning, when church is going on, I've seen semis have to idle there to try to get through their windows, parking over there in a corner and they're trying to take a hard right. So I just want to verify what Chris said there. I don't really understand what a variance is, but it seems like a variance to a code is setting precedents. So I'm not sure if that's what y'all are into. If you want to change the code, change the code, but don't set a precedent, excuse me. And then we people watch, so during the events that go on at the city park, lots of events go on. And before we join, we sit, sit around and watch folks going to the parks. It's really fun to do, you know, on a Saturday and a Thursday. But my point is, parking is already at a precedence up and down Beaver. And so if you're gonna give away six, six parking spaces, those folks have to move on down yonder to other people's residence. So it's not just the people around Beaver who are gonna be impacted. It's gonna be people down the road where folks are gonna be pushed out farther and farther from Beaver for city parking. And that's all I have to say. Jen Appleton, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Melissa Keith Byrd, 314 Prospect Street. Also, Chris Byrd's my wife. And again, no offense to you guys, because you guys are really nice people. We've lived it, I personally lived it, 314 Prospect Street for almost 25 years now. And known the tenants from way, way back, obviously. And sadly, what used to be one of the most beautiful properties on our lot, on our block, has now turned to be one of the most eyesore properties on the lot or on our block. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Damages to buildings that were caused from an accident that have not been repaired have been that way for probably a year and a half. It's the condition of the current houses owned by this gentleman and his wife. That adding on to that, we all want to have our neighborhoods look beautiful. Obviously, I mean, I'm sure I'm not the only person, but we're not doing a whole lot about weed control lately. Weeds are off the hook, especially in our neighborhood. It's very frustrating because we take great pride in our house. We work on it almost all the time, it's a labor of love. I hate to see something going where we're adding more population to an area where we're already not adding any value or taking care of our little neighborhood. Beyond that, the bigger concern I have is the increase in traffic. Like Chris told you, we went out and we measured on a Sunday when there wasn't a whole lot of traffic. Kiowa is a lot wider than Beaver. Getting cars in and out of there is a concern. The increase of traffic, not being able to have good clear vision when you're at the stop signs looking down that direction towards State Street, to me, seems problematic. You know, I don't know if there's any way you guys could go into the, the easement or anything like that instead of just adding these parking spaces onto the street. But I don't feel at this time for us personally, that I don't think that's a smart choice is to adding extra traffic in an already densely populated area. Like Jenny said, with all the events that go down in City Park, we live close to town and yes, that's our choice. But we already have people that park up to our driveways when we're, when there's an event going on downtown. We welcome that because we want to see the events downtown. But again, it's gonna start pushing it back further and further and further because we're designating these now as residential parking spaces. Just concerned about excess traffic, that's all I got. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Nation, can we address something with you again? We're looking at Google Earth and from State Street to the alley on Beaver, on the north side is all diagonal, correct?
Correct.
So we're just discussing extending that diagonal to... Yeah, how many years did I write tickets on Prospect? Thank you. Oh, I would have failed my FTO, yeah, sorry. And I, I guess the other, am I correct on that?
Yes, that's correct.
The other thing I guess was brought up was, we're here only tonight to discuss parking variance, not the conditions of the property or the lack of residential support or the building design. That's already been addressed, correct? We are here strictly for the variance?
You are correct, parking is the only thing that's in front of you.
That, that's all I had for you, I'm sorry.
You're looking for eight, is that what I got?
Nine.
Nine?
They have six spaces that are required under the code.
Okay.
And they're proposing to create those nine spots that are shown in their sketch.
And there's nothing for Prospect except horizontal?
That's correct.
Okay. So they, do they, are they going to utilize Prospect Street?
They can, I mean, there's nothing that prevents them from using any other public parking that any other citizen would.
I mean, it's right in front of their property, right?
Yep, and this discussion, when it was in front of council before, we were very clear that these are not exclusive parking spots for these three housing units. Are they conveniently located immediately in front of and adjacent to, yes. And they're being generated to overcome their need for parking. But we're not allowing them to basically put a signage on it that says only the residents of these units can stay in these spots.
Okay.
So what I understand from Ms. Byrd and Ms. Bird is that, that they're afraid that it's too close to Prospect and too close, that, that there's too many of them?
If I understand, their concern is that moving those spots in front of that lot, basically from being, you know, horizontal up against the curb to being diagonal, you're cutting down the throat of the street and therefore making it tougher for larger vehicles such as semi trucks to get out of the alley and back on to Beaver. And that is probably mathematically correct. I mean, truck drivers are, if they've got enough room there, they're gonna take as wide a turn as they can. And so truck drivers have probably become accustomed to coming out of that alley and swinging wider and using those places. But we have these type of alley, you know, incidences where you're coming out into those situations with diagonal parking all over in those one-block areas off of Main Street. And so from my standpoint, can they make it work? Yeah, they probably can. They either go down the next alley and, or down to Platt and then come out of the alley there. Is it gonna cause a truck driver some concern? You could probably find a truck driver that'll tell you that, yeah, that would cause some concern. I can't sit here and deny that.
Well, if, if you eliminate that one that's closest to the alley?
Well, it's just the nature of, you're going from a car that's only gonna be sticking about eight feet away from the curb to now we're gonna be sticking, you know, 14 and a half feet away from.
Yeah, 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 I'm, I'm, I know where the property is.
Mathematically, we're just now moving more object further out into the, the driving path of Beaver, so. And we can't, by putting in diagonal, there's no way we can keep from doing that.
Right, but further, but further down, it's the same, but it, it slims off right there? That block?
Yeah, if you, if you look at the, go to the west end of that 200 block, it's diagonal parking on both sides of the street.
Right.
And at this section, the east end of the block, it's not diagonal on the north side, which is what we're talking about, but it is diagonal on the south side.
Oh, yes, yes, in front, in, in front of the, the. Well, in, in front of the medical center there.
Yes.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to say, when I exited the post office the other day, I basically had to cross the street, go down the next street and then exit on to Bijou, just to go westbound, because Beaver's closed down, that's something that we created. Unfortunately, these parking spaces are not specifically to this residence. They're just happy to do it, there's no off-street parking, right, at all? I feel like this is something, one, we had these people in here talking, were lack of housing, this helps it. The other part is, City of Morgan is getting bigger and it is getting busier. There's diagonal parking across the street. I just feel like we're probably gonna have to monitor it. And, and more than likely, I mean, we took, I don't know how many parking places we took away from Beaver between State and Main Street. And I'm sure that's gonna trickle over and it's probably gonna trickle over to you ladies, which is not great. I get that. He's met all of his setbacks, we passed this once before. There's diagonal on that side of East Beaver, there's diagonal on the west side of Beaver. I would, at this point, be in favor of it, so that's where I'm coming from.
But it's diagonal down, down past the, the alley there, isn't it?
Yeah.
Right, that's what, okay, I don't.
Okay, next is, is there any, is there anyone else? If there's no one else in public who wishes to speak, I will ask the city clerk to, if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this hearing.
Not through my office, your honor.
We will now proceed to council discussion. Are there any questions from the council or any discussion of the council? Well, we are.
I guess we already did.
That's okay. I, 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 I understand the parking and I use Beaver Street, so, you know, kind of a lot for me. But we are so desperate for housing. And, and it also, it cleans up a, a extremely blighted property that was worse. And so I, I just think that we're gonna have to deal with the parking as we add more people to the housing, but we need to have people in houses and that work. So I, I just, you know, I sympathize with you guys on the parking, but we need houses so desperately. And I, I, I'm in favor of doing that. And it, it fits, I think it'll look very nice. It fits with Keller's, the, the doctor's office across the street, so it's kind of consistent with that. But I think we'll all have to figure out little different ways of parking because we need houses. And I think there's gonna be more issues as apartments go, go in downtown. But we, we have to put people in homes, so I'm, I'm in favor of doing that.
One thing I, I would kind of want to point out, parking aside, like they presented, they live right next door to one of his properties that is dilapidated, not taken care of. I'd like to see an effort in some of his other rentals before I agree to add him some parking spaces. I understand they're not specific to his property there, but it, it makes it bad when you've lived there 25 years and you're living next to a rundown house and then you got another one up the street that has been sitting there for a while. I understand COVID, but I'm kind of having a problem with not cleaning up the other property in the time that he's sat on this property and hasn't done anything with.
Well, this one isn't gonna be, there's not gonna be any place for weeds, so that's... I said I think that it's gonna cover the whole ground, so.
Well, I understand that, but he also has other properties within the city that they're living right next to that haven't been cleaned up either.
Well, maybe, maybe, like, this was a learning council, maybe, maybe he'll do something. Anyway, I think we're ready to.
Is this, is this, you need to come to the podium?
I guess, is this relevant to the parking variance?
So on page 41 of your packet, the, when reviewing a variance, following criteria are met and there's, you know, a list of seven that are there for the, for what is necessary, so.
Okay, is there any other comments?
I mean, you, you are able to hear any rebuttal if you'd like to from the applicant or ask him any questions or, you know, that kind of thing, if that helps. But just to make sure we follow those criteria, you know, exceptional circumstances, specific conditions which prohibit, the reason for the variance, which is for parking, manner of strict application of regulation would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of his land, unique conditions and circumstances are not the result of actions taken by the applicant, the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare and will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and the applicant cannot derive a reasonable use of the property without a variance and the variance would not be injurious to adjacent property or improvements. So those are the factors and if anything, so if anything relates to that as you're considering it, that's applicable.
Okay, are we, we would be doing a resolution, Nina?
We're a fraction. So if you are making a, a motion, I would say again, consider those factors. And then if you are going to approve, make sure you follow those, include those four conditions that are listed on the bottom of page 41.
We do this by resolution?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I would entertain a resolution. The council acting as zoning board of appeals.
I'll make a resolution to approve the application for parking variance at 229 East Beaver. I think we addressed it once two years ago, nothing has changed.
Second.
It's been a resolution made by John Kaber, seconded by Clint Anderson, vote by roll call.
Do you also intend, it's up to you, but do you intend to include those four conditions? That are listed on page 41?
Do you want me to add those?
Recommended by staff, and we could just reference them, but I want to make sure your motion includes that.
To the actions requested, they cover the four areas.
Four conditions, yeah.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, resolution has been made by John Kaber, fixed up a little bit by Clint Anderson. Anderson, vote by roll call, please.
That resolution carries on a vote of five to two with Council members Parks and Chassa voting against.
The next item on our agenda is presentation and possible action on resolution authorizing the sale of real property at Lot Ten of the Point Village Commercial Park subdivision and approving a development agreement for said property with Wayne Ventures, Ms. Williams.
Um, hi, Mayor Council. This resolution is just to clarify an, a sale, authorization of a sale that you have already approved with a different entity, Kinzale Properties, and this is, um, you have, you had met in executive session with this particular developer, I don't really, in May you approved this, so it's for, um, the, a car wash to be developed in, in Center Point. So they have since told us that they have changed the entity name from Kinzale Property to Wayne Ventures LLC. It wasn't the exact same owners, so I just felt, you know, let's make sure everything's proper, especially for the future, I've seen, I've seen situations where, you know, you, you, you get ten years in advance and you say, well, how is this approved, you know, just to make sure everything's clear according to your code, that you're approving now the sale of the property to, uh, plus the title company would probably require this as well, that you're approving the sale of that property to Wayne Ventures LLC. I believe their attorney is online, is that, I'm sure that's all right, the attorney if she wants to speak? Oh, no, okay. All right, so, but anyway, if you have any questions, you can let me know. I just, I'm sorry.
Any questions?
No, I mean, any other questions?
Okay.
So all that has changed is the name, is that correct?
It's not all the same entities behind, like the individuals behind that name, but it's the majority that are similar, but yes, it's, it's to a different entity.
And the outlining is.
Oh, everything's exactly the same, so, well, literally in the agreements, all that I changed was the entity name, um, just wanted to kind of cover all our bases, just to be safe, um, you've already authorized us in May.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, for resolution, reauthorizing the sale of real property at Lot Ten of Point Village Commercial Park subdivision and approving a development agreement for said property with Wayne Ventures LLC.
Second.
A resolution's been made by Doug Sosha, seconded by John Caper, vote by, vote by roll call, please.
That resolution carries unanimously.
The next item is presentation and possible action on bids for a tractor with mower for the water treatment plant, Mr. O'Connes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I, uh, come before you tonight, um, seeking approval to purchase a tractor and a mower for the water treatment plant. We, uh, budgeted ninety thousand dollars for this tractor. Some of you guys will remember that we did have, uh, two wildfires last year, in, in twenty twenty-one, south of the water treatment plant and one east of the tank site, and then twenty twenty, we also had a fire south of the tanks that actually moved real quick up and around the tanks. Uh, fortunately, we keep that area mode inside the tank, tank site, so once it came through the fence, it did fizzle up, so there was no fuel. Guys are doing a lot more, uh, fire mitigation since all these fires. Um, one of the things that would help would be a larger tractor and a larger mower. We currently use a Skidster with a six-foot flail mower on the front of it, so it takes a lot, it takes guys a long time, and the cab does not have AC or, or heat for the winter time, so when those guys spend a full day mowing with a flail mower, ninety-degree weather, they come out, gray shirts turn to brown, so it's not a really good environment. Um, like I said, we did budget ninety thousand dollars for this tractor and flail mower for this year. Uh, Wickham Tractor did come in at seventy thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and sixteen cents. This tractor's very similar to the one that the Parks, Parks Department got, uh, in two thousand twenty-one. We actually went down, took a look at it, they're satisfied with the tractor they have and the mower, we think it'll be sufficient for what we, what we need it for as well.
Sounds good, Al, so this, this is gonna take care of your needs, and, huh?
We believe so.
Okay.
We're talking, uh, you know, we're going from a six-foot flail mower to a twelve-foot.
Oh, okay.
Wing rotary cut, rotary brush cutter.
Right, okay.
Unclosed cab.
Great, and it's, it's within your budget, then?
Yes. So staff is requesting council's approval to accept the bid from Wickham Tractor Company in the amount of seventy thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and sixteen cents for a Kubota M seventy-sixty H, HDC twelve tractor with loader and Land Pride RC twenty-five twelve rotary brush cutter to utilize at the water treatment plant.
Any other questions? Okay, I would, um, entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, for resolution to what Al just said, there's no sense of re-reading that.
Trying to make it easy for you.
Shut up, baby, thank you.
Okay, a resolution has been made by, um, the remarks by Mr. O'Connes, who knows best, and seconded by.
Clint Anderson.
Clint Anderson, vote by roll call, please.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Council Mayor.
Yeah.
Go mow weeds.
Come in town.
Mow weeds, yeah.
We can use it, we could use it now. Uh, next item is presentation and possible action on first reading of an ordinance, twelve, um, twenty, amending the two thousand twenty-one budget and request to reschedule a public hearing on the ordinance for September twentieth, Mrs. Guzman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, um, we are presenting with possible action by resolution on first reading of an ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-one budget appropriations. Um, Chris is here from our finance department, she's been working, uh, very diligently, um, with Christine, who is with us via Zoom, um, from Haney and Company. I will have Chris read that and present that to you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight, as Raquel stated, we have an ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-one budget appropriations. We are seeking the amount, proposed amendment of three million, seven hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars, um, increasing the final twenty twenty-one budget to seventy-five million, one hundred and thirteen thousand and ninety-six dollars. Explanation for the amendment is as follows. The increase of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars to the converse, the con, conservation trust fund is due to the carryover expense from twenty twenty that was related to the Colorado Parks and Wildlife Grant. Um, the electric fund increase of a little over one point three seven million is partially due to the higher, uh, purchase power costs, is also due to higher than budgeted charges to the fund for the INLU taxes. INLU taxes were budgeted and charged based on usage, and the usage was underestimated for twenty twenty-one. Another factor is the depreciation expense not included in the twenty twenty-one budget. The increase of a little over two point one eight seven million in the water fund is also due to depreciation expense of one point four million. The additional expense is from the NISP investment adjustment, the water treatment plant, Eastern Pump Station, and the additional approved expense for capital outlay for the water mains. The gas fund increase of fourteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars is due to an increase in the purchase gas cost. There again, we all know, uh, budget amendments are necessary, and it must be made prior to our final audit to avoid any budget violation, especially if the actual expense exceeds our budgeted, original budgeted appropriations. Um, since our final audit will be presented, um, next council meeting, September twentieth, we need to make the necessary changes this evening. So staff recommends that we approve the first reading of the ordinance, ordinance amending the twenty twenty-one budget as presented, and schedule a second reading and a public hearing on the ordinance on our next council meeting, September twentieth. And Christine Haney is available for any additional questions as well.
Any questions?
We made the, um, the appropriate adjustments, so you don't have to come back and ask us for three million dollars next year?
This is annual.
All right.
This is all dependent upon what you want to do next year. It's not budgeted, that you may approve during the budget year.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I know you girls work hard on this, and you can't foresee everything.
No, and there again, you do have the ability to, as you just did this evening, to approve more than what you had budgeted, so, um, we will do our best to, or you all should, you know, help you do your best to keep your finances down, and we'll stay within, so we don't have a budget violation.
Big job, I, I, it's, it's, I have to redo, rego in and rego in and rego in. Okay, um, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, make a resolution to approve first reading of the ordinance amending the twenty twenty-one budget and request to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance for September twentieth.
Second.
Resolution has been made by John Caper, um, seconded by Clint Anderson, vote by roll call, please.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you, thank you, Christine.
Sorry, Christine. It's been a long night for you.
Have a good evening, thank you.
Next item is the twenty twenty-three budget calendar, present, presentation of the self-insurance fund liabilities, risk, and cost for two thousand twenty-two and renew of the schedule fees, Mr. Shaver, Ms. Guzman, and Mr. Cr, Ms. Cronkow, and Mr. Brennan.
Um, this self-insurance fund liabilities update will be done by Ms. Kukow, and then, uh, Mr. Brennan will address, will cover the, uh, pages that have the schedule of fees on it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, as you mentioned, I'll be going over the budget for the self-insurance fund. These line items contain, um, the employee health plans, as well as the property casualty, our workman's comp, and our stock loss insurance. In the past, we've done this budget back in June, um, however, most of all these policies renew one-on, so we pushed this back so we can come with actual numbers for you guys instead of making estimates. And a few of the changes, uh, our first one is our stock loss on our budget for twenty twenty-two, we had it coming in at seven fifty, um, and the renewal for the twenty twenty-three is coming in at eight fifty. Um, I feel like this is a little bit off because we estimated last year's numbers when we came into it, um, and we didn't have the actual, so the cost for the renewal is not really going up that much, it's about the same, so, um, there's that one, and then the other two increases are the city paid life insurance and the short-term disability, which those are both geared, um, and guided by the employee's age and their salaries. And then our last increase would be for our property casualty through SIRSa. Most of their renewals, they said, were coming in around ten percent of an increase, and ours came in just a little under five percent, so it's going from four thirty-five to four hundred and fifty-five thousand. Anybody have any questions that I can answer for you?
Any questions? Okay, um, okay, I think, what do we do on this? Okay, okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Your Honor, then I'll, uh, go into the, um, schedule of fees, part of this. I only included in the packet the pages, this is about a thirty-five, thirty-eight-page document, I only included the pages that actually have changes, uh, on them. Um, those changes are redlined or marked up on the document, but I also put little arrows in the margin to help you find them. Uh, the col, the fire department, all they did was add the, um, Fire Protection Bureau, I think their, uh, email address. Police Department has, um, changed, um, to digital media device because it said CD, DVD, and a lot of people don't use any of those, um, anymore, um, and includes body worn camera, uh, records as well. Uh, then the next thing is the building department, there's multiple changes in this having to do with the fact that we no longer do electrical inspections, um, so you can see the, uh, I didn't put an arrow on that one, but at the top, right under the heading of building, electrical is crossed out, the solar panel permit does not include electrical. There was one, um, other thing that is in, added to this, this is AC air conditioning installation also does not include, uh, electrical, uh, that one didn't make it into the, uh, document that was in your packet in time. We're kind of reformatting this at the same time we were updating it, which turned out not to be a great idea. Um, then on the next page, under construction fees, electrical is lined out. Um, same thing on the next page, under item four. And then the last thing is at the very top of the, um, the last page, just before the wastewater treatment plant, um, that's under utility billing, and copy of the utility bill is increasing from a quarter to a dollar per bill. So we'll have that other, um, air conditioning item corrected on that copy when we bring this back for final approval, which is still a little bit up in the air, um, it'll be at least in October, maybe November, early November. Yeah, yeah, that one's just lined up. Hmm, yeah.
Any questions?
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Okay, that is a review of the JO.
So this, this was just for information I'll use, or did we have?
Yeah, that's just a, a review of the changes that we're contemplating, um, it's possible there may be others, but I doubt it at this point.
Anyone have questions? Okay, um, the next item is reports by officials and staff. Um, I will ask, um, Mr. Sharp, of course.
So I only have a couple things. One, probably most importantly is, uh, since I'm not home, happy birthday to my wife, I'm sure she's intently watching this on YouTube. Secondly, and equally is important, we are doing a recruiting expo on September seventeenth, we're from nine AM to ten AM, we're gonna try something new. Hopefully, if anybody's interested in becoming a police officer, um, come down to the police department, as any good cop shop would have, we'll have free coffee and donuts, and we want to sit down and, and really have an opportunity to show people the department, talk, talk to them about what it is to be a police officer in our community, and, and hopefully get some applicants for some police officer positions that we will have, to be sending somebody to an academy in January, so, um, again, trying something new.
Good, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Shaver, I've kind of lost my voice.
We've just been, uh, going through transitions, um, waiting for Brent to become the regular city manager, and so I will continue to help out where, where it's needed until that time. And things are rolling along, they're working on the, uh, Beaver Avenue extension, uh, and the industrial park, I've got the earth movers out there rolling along with that, uh, we have met with Brittany Holmes, they're anxious to come in and start building their, uh, properties, so, got a few things coming up for the next council meeting, um, I think will be good for the city, so, uh, other than that, we're just moving along unless somebody else wants to report. Brent, you got anything you want to say, or? Okay, it's been a long night.
Okay, okay, that's it. Thank you all for staying here, and for all the work that's always done for the city, I appreciate it. Next is, I won't forget you, Mr. Brennan, like usual. The next is bids, meetings, and announcements, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Your Honor, a couple of bids, the city's accepting proposals for the electric building expansion project until 3:00 PM on September 8th, and proposals for animal shelter services until 3:00 PM on October 25th, under meetings, the planning commission is scheduled to meet on Monday the 12th at 4:30 PM here at City Hall, senior center advisory board also meets on the 12th at 1:30 PM at the senior center, the library board, advisory board is scheduled to meet September 19th at 4:30 PM in the museum community room, and the next city council regular meeting is scheduled for September 20th at 6:00 PM here.
Okay, it looks like that is it, so, this meeting is adjourned.